Good evening and welcome to our July meeting, regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. Called meeting to order at this time. We have with us tonight Reverend Ricky Jacobs, who will be having our invocation for us. Reverend Jacobs?
Let us pray. Kind most gracious heavenly Father, in the loving name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we ask today, dear God, for divine direction, dear heavenly Father, as this council comes together to meet for the needs of this city, dear God, to lead it in the right way. I pray heavenly Father that you'll bless everyone that works in this city, dear heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, those that are in charge of this city, dear God, that you would help them to realize and know that you're always there to help them in the time of trouble, in the time of need, dear Father, in the time of their stress, dear Lord, that you're there to comfort, that you're there to strengthen, that you're there to give knowledge and strength, dear God, and most of all, to give your precious love. So I pray, dear heavenly Father, dear God, as this council meeting goes tonight, Lord, that your love will be upon this city and upon this council meeting. And Father, we pray the night, dear Lord, for those that don't know you, Lord, they'll come to your saving knowledge, and those that are sick, dear heavenly Father, they'll be healed, dear Father. And I pray for Ashton, dear God, that as she travels, dear God, to go to venture out, dear Lord, to represent this city, most of all, you heavenly Father, I pray that she'll be a winner in you. And Lord, help her to win. Great thanks for you, in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you Reverend Jacobs. At this time, council, you have before you the agenda for tonight. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved to approve?
A motion and a second. Are there any changes that need to be made, additions or deletions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Also, before you council tonight, you have the minutes from the June 14th, open and closed sessions. What are your wishes on that?
So moved to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Are there any changes, or additions, or deletions that need to be made at this time to those? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Also, I need to mention at this time that Mr. McQueen is out of town tonight, is why he's not here. At this time, we come to item number five, which is comments from attendees. If we have anyone here tonight who would like to make any comments or say something to council that's not on the agenda for tonight, please come forward at this time.
Jerry Lamont, retired city employee. I come to let the city council know that the pitching machine tournament that Mr. McCormick and Parks and Recreation staff run last month went perfect, beautiful. He did a great job running it. I didn't see nobody from the city council down there. I did see the city manager once, but y'all missed out on a great tournament. It's Parks and Recreation staff and Jennifer's husband helped, worked down there all the time helping him. And I was down there three days. He run a great tournament. And I think y'all missed out by not going down there and watching. And I also got one more comment. Last month, your city council, our city council, did an injustice to our city employees by freezing their raises. I think y'all done them wrong. You take a city employee who makes twenty-two thousand a year, his raise wasn't gonna be but three hundred dollars over the whole year. And when you take that down to twenty-six payments, that's only twelve dollars a paycheck. He's probably not even gonna get but nine dollars a day. And y'all froze the salary. Yet, you sit up there and you gave yourself a sixty percent raise without letting nobody know. Not letting nobody know that y'all got a sixty percent raise. And yet, y'all gonna sit up there and freeze their salaries. And I've talked to a bunch of them, 'cause I still friends with them, and you got a lot of pissed off city employees. And y'all supposed to be looking out for them. That's what y'all were elected for, to look out for the city employees and the city people. And y'all let them down last week, last month, slapped them in the face. But yet, y'all gave yourselves a sixty percent raise. Think about that.
Think about your math.
Yeah, you need to get your math right before you present it.
Your math is wrong. The employees got a raise.
You know, they froze the salaries.
No.
No.
They got a two and a half percent raise and a longevity bonus.
They were gonna get five. We froze the two and a half percent. They got two and a half percent.
They were supposed to get one point five and y'all froze it last month.
They got two and a half percent. So before you come presenting council, get your facts straight.
No, it was never changed. That's the way it was done at the meeting. We're also elected by the city of citizens, not the employees.
I know that. I understand that.
And there hasn't been a raise to this board in twenty years.
I understand that too.
And there's been a raise to the city employees every year.
I know. I've worked there.
So...
But did y'all not freeze the one point five percent raise last month?
Oh, that wasn't a raise. That was a one and a half percent bonus that was postponed till January.
They got a two and a half percent raise, a longevity bonus.
Well, you didn't say nothing about the two and a half percent raise.
Yes, we did.
It was voted on.
Hold on a minute. Let me tell you, Jerry, right up front. Everything that was done was done out in the open, right here on TV. There was nothing done behind closed doors. As a matter of fact, we spent probably thirty minutes in the last meeting, and if you'll go back and look at it, you'll see everything that was approved and everything that was changed, and it's right there to be seen on television.
Okay, well then, I'm sorry, but I didn't see where it said.
And I will say this. Furthermore, don't tell me when I missed out on something when you don't know what my schedule was. 'Cause for the past two weeks, I've been out of town on business and vacation. Well, you said you missed out, you should've been there.
Well, I mean, the tournament's been, what, three weeks ago?
And I've been out a week for work. Weeks dealing with work.
I just said, y'all missed out on something good that the city put on.
Jerry, you need to get it corrected.
Y'all missed out on something good that the city put on, and y'all were up here bragging about last month about getting it, but yet, nobody comes down there to see how good your staff and your Parks and Recreation does.
No, 'cause I hadn't spent fourteen years coaching in Parks and Rec in the city of Hamlet.
Oh, I have. I spent thirty something.
Okay, well, I'm happy for you and appreciate your time.
All right, well, I didn't see, I didn't know you gave them two percent.
Well, you need, again, it's your facts, right?
A longevity bonus.
You listening to people instead of finding out yourself?
And we didn't pass on the expense of the health insurance going up, what, three hundred dollars a person? We didn't pass that along either.
Still getting free insurance.
I'm sorry. Well, they ought to.
No, they not ought to. It's a privilege that they have, 'cause everybody else in America that works is paying for theirs.
I understand. But you wanna keep good for the employees, you gotta keep them happy. All employees.
Well, they're telling you one thing and us another.
Well, I can tell you what I've been told.
But I had, I'll tell you, I had heard those same rumors, and I was gonna make comment about it tonight, that there was nothing done in secret, there was nothing done behind closed doors, and I would invite anybody who was interested to go back and look at last month's meeting, and you'll see a full discussion of any kind of pay raises or anything.
Same rumors you heard, same rumors I heard.
Well, let's not go by rumors. Look, this camera and these people in front of me don't change anything I have to say. I'll tell you up front, just like I will outside those doors, get your facts straight before you come and present something to a board that we work hard every single day. I've even told our city manager, we have spent nothing but hours, hours, talking about city employees whenever we represent the city of Hamlet, and we have done absolutely hardly nothing for the city of Hamlet, because we're taking care of the employees in every meeting we have been in. Look at the minutes.
I understand, and I'm glad you did.
So it upsets me that you come here without facts, and you stand upon this board and in front of these people, especially a young lady that's here tonight, that she's gotta get out of here. She's got somewhere to go doing something good for this city, and you present stuff that you have no facts on.
Well, you didn't go, your raise didn't go from four thousand to...
Don't read your note card that somebody wrote for you. You need to get your facts together.
This comes from the city hall. Y'all went from thirty-six to six thousand, and from twenty-four hundred to four thousand.
In twenty years.
I understand that.
You know how many dag on days I take to spend out of my wife's and my kids' time to come here and have meetings every month, more than once?
I agree. Why'd you run the city office at that? Didn't...
'Cause I love it. But at the same time, you don't wanna lose love.
All right, that's enough.
I also believe the two and a half percent's one of the largest raises given.
It's been on par with other years.
But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Has anyone else that's got comments tonight?
My name is Willie Bolton. And I'm just concerned about the park down there at South Hamlet. Y'all have any plans to do any work to the basketball court down there?
Yes, sir. We actually talked about that at one meeting, 'cause it is horrible. And also, the parking lot across the street in horrible condition. So we are working on that, trying to figure out what we can do. We even talked about possibly looking at doing the basketball court on the other side of the road, 'cause it can be raised, but we've gotta fix our spring problem we have down there before we can kinda figure out what we're gonna do with it. But that's a very good, very good question on that.
I could do it in the next year?
I would love to see it sooner.
Yeah, hopefully it's gonna be done soon.
Much sooner than that, 'cause this, I agree, that place down there is ridiculous, and it has been for... There's not even been nets on that.
Mr. Abernathy?
Willie, we have discussed that from the staff level and at the council level, but if you would like to meet sometime later this week or next, I'd be glad to meet you down there and, you know, see what your thoughts were as far as what we could do when we, you know, make improvements down there.
I'll give you a call if you want. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll close comments from attendees. At this time, I have a special presentation to make to a young lady. And Ashton Locklear, if you'd come up, please, to the front. Stand up here if you would with us. Uh, this is probably gonna be the best thing I will do the whole time I am mayor. I want you to know that my wife and I were glued to the TV set on Friday night and Sunday, and we were with you every move you made. But we are so proud of you, not just for the fact that you represent Hamlet and the Lumbee tribe, but we're just excited because you have excelled so well. You have just put your whole life into it. So I have a proclamation to read to you tonight. Whereas the city of Hamlet is exceptionally proud to recognize hometown gymnast Ashton Locklear on another celebratory occasion, and whereas Ashton Locklear, as a member of our community, began her gymnastic training at Physical Awareness and Gymnastics in Hamlet under the guidance of Terry Barrett at the age of two, and Ashton started competing at the age of five. And whereas Ashton has demonstrated an outstanding spirit of dedication and hard work over the past sixteen years by continuously training and making sacrifices to achieve her competitive gymnastic goals, and whereas Ashton's family has provided continuous encouragement and support in Ashton's endeavors, and whereas Ashton Locklear has recently competed in many competitions, including but not limited to the Just Solo Trophy competition in Italy and the 2016 Pacific Rim Championships in Everett, Washington, make it to the United States Olympic Trial teams, and whereas Ashton Locklear competed as a specialist on the uneven bars and balance beam during the U.S. Olympic Team Trials in San Jose, California, on Friday and Sunday, July the 10th, 2016, where she was named to serve as an alternate athlete in the Summer Olympics for Team USA. And whereas Hamlet native Ms. Ashton Locklear will travel to the Summer Olympics in Rio de Janeiro in August of 2016 to serve as an alternate to the U.S. Women's Gymnastic Team, and whereas Ashton continues to exhibit outstanding qualities of teamwork, respect, and leadership, serving as a role model to her community, her peers, and her team members, now therefore, the city of Hamlet is pleased to honor the continued outstanding achievements of Ashton Locklear, who in distinguishing herself, has brought great honor and credit to her family, her friends, and community. In witness thereof, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet, have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Hamlet to be affixed this 12th day of July, 2016. Pardon? Yes, council come around. I feel honored to be up here with you. I hope you have a big, I hope you have a great time down there in Rio de Janeiro. And I would go on to say this. Bernice Owens is here tonight, and Bernice has worked real hard to help get donations for the family to go to Rio, so if anyone's interested in making donations, please contact Bernice, and she'll tell you how to do it. Am I correct on that? Okay, very good. Thank you.
And before you go as well, Jesse sent a note to myself and to Marcus to say that even though he's out of town, he's extremely proud of you, and congratulates you on where you're going and all your dedication that you've given to this. So he wanted to express his, you know, thoughts and all that with you. And like the mayor said, any organizations or businesses out there that's willing to assist and for travels or anything else that can do it, be much appreciated. And they can contact city hall if they need to find a way to get in touch with the family.
Okay, one other comment. Go ahead. No, you're okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. That's great. Thank you.
Can you tell...
That's great. Oh, that's pretty.
Is there...
Just give it to me. Just give it to me. Come on, everybody. Seriously, if you want to donate, and I'd be very happy if everyone did, you can reach me at Bill Built Auto Parts, or reach me by cell, 910-995-8268. I about forgot my phone number, and I'm wanting money. But anyway, every, even a dollar would be appreciated. And let me say something else. We had a fundraiser, and a lot of people came, and we... Susan, didn't we do thirteen, thirteen forty, forty or sixty? Susan, was it forty or sixty? Thirteen, forty or sixty? Um, also, Chief Waters over here, he brought the little cart from county rescue, is that correct? And we sold hot dogs and cakes and chips, and just had a real good time. And I appreciate everyone that came, and we had a good time.
How do they make it checkout to? Do they make it out to...
They make the checkout to BB, uh, Carrie Locklear. There's an account at BBNT.
Okay.
Here in Hamlet.
Okay. To Terry Locklear at BBT.
Carrie.
C-A-R-R-I-E.
BBT and Hamlet.
C-A-R-R-I-E.
That's correct. Okay. C-A-R-R-I-E, Carrie Locklear. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all. And we may not be there with y'all, the whole team physically, but we'll be on the TV with them every day. And I hope you get a chance, I don't wanna hurt, wish anybody anything bad, but I hope you get a chance to compete.
Have a great time.
Yeah, if nothing else, at least have a great time.
Just go have fun. Have a great time. It'd be a great experience.
There's no pressure on you. Thank y'all so much. Thank you. Okay, moving along to new business. Item number seven. We have consideration of the text amendments to Article Five and Six of Personnel Policy. Did you have comments on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, I just wanted to let you know that I noticed that there were two sections in our personnel policy that outlined merit raises and performance evaluations, and one section basically elaborates that the performance evaluation is supposed to occur in the month of March and April, and another says that it's supposed to occur annually, on an annual basis after employment into the current position. So all this text amendment is, is a clarification that makes both sections congruent with one another and basically states that the employee is subject to a merit raise, those merit raises that you voted on in this fiscal year's budget. And the merit raise is eligible after a performance evaluation, which occurs one year after employment into the current position of the employee, whether it's initial employment or promotion up to another position, such as maybe a regular police officer being promoted up to a sergeant, as an example.
Counsel, what are your wishes on this?
Um, you gave a nice overview of this, explaining. I moved to approve.
Motion to approve? Have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item of business that we have is the tax releases. We don't have just a couple on there this month that amount to ninety-two dollars and fifty-one cents?
Yes, sir. I saw no issues with that. Moved to approve.
Motion to approve? Need a second? Got a second? Any further comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, at this time, we will move on into departmental reports, and we will start with fire chief. Anybody got comments, chief? Police chief?
Okay, while I've got under police matters, I noticed in the paper this morning a gentleman by the name of Willie Williamson passed away down in, down on the coast. And Willie came up here back in the seventies, retired from the military, and became assistant police chief under Robert Beck, and was assistant police chief here for a number of years. And he, one of his daughters at one time was married to a trooper that was stationed down in Jacksonville who passed away from a serious disease years ago. But we had lost track of him. He lived over on Circle Wood Drive. We had lost track of him. He's solid eighty-some years old and passed away, so I just wanted to note that. He was a good man, and I worked with him a lot. Just wanted to note that.
Before you move on out of the police department, um, we, we've talked about this. I mentioned it to Scott, Marcus, and I talked about it, but we really need to find some way to get some more visibility down near the Hamlet Housing Authority area, back towards the store there, where we've had some issues in that area, so we just kinda, you think some ideas or something we can have. I know, you know, we talked about some type of mobile unit somewhere, just something, so we can have some, not just a car, but a mobile unit or something there for visibility. I don't know what we can do to make that happen, but we need to just put it somewhere on the front burner and let's talk about it.
Anybody else? If not, Mr. Stubbs?
Appreciate everything you're doing. It's tough, all this rain, but I mean, it's better having rain than drought. It seems like it's either feast or famine for us, but things are going great. Thank you so much. Gail, you have anything for us tonight? Jennifer? Thank you. You're doing a good job over there. People packs are coming in. Appreciate it. Stephanie?
You get to come to the front.
Yeah, you get to come to the front.
Come on down.
I've got everything organized, and I've actually got everything archived. There was two years' worth of stuff sitting in that office just waiting to be archived. So it's all put away now. It has a place in the computer. It has a place in the archive room. And I'm only working, I've got a million ideas, but the one thing I'm focusing on right now is getting the gift shop into the visitor's center. So we're doing a bit of a test run on that and moving some items into it, and I've worked with some local vendors to bring some local people in that are selling stuff, as well as we're now able to sell board game and tabletop games from a lot of different companies, like Ticket to Ride, which is a train-based game, Timeline, which is a history-based game, things that you can't get other places, which I think is the problem with the gift shop now, is you can get that stuff anywhere. So that's my current project, and then maybe I'll have another one next month.
Well, many thanks to you and the manager, city employees, and HPDA that all worked on the Fourth of July celebration. They just went off wonderful. Thank you so much for that. Anyone have anything for Miss Stephanie tonight?
I know she's a go-getter, so it's gonna be awesome down there.
Jill? Amy? Fantastic. State manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and city council, just to reiterate some of the things that were discussed earlier tonight, I do want to thank you for all of your support for our employees. I understand that you've got to make difficult decisions in the best interest of our citizens. And overall, you approved merit raises in the amount of two and a half percent, a new and improved longevity program, brand new, to this fiscal year, as well as an additional absorption of the continued increases in our healthcare costs. Our city provides one hundred percent fully paid-for healthcare premiums to our employees, and you can't get that in many other employers in the community. So I do want to thank you guys for all that you do to support us. I want to thank everyone who came out to enjoy the family fun activities and the fireworks on the Fourth of July. The weather, the weather required us to adjust our activities, but people came out and they stayed, rain or shine, and we really enjoyed ourselves. I really want to thank the Richmond County Tourism Development Authority for assisting us in helping to market that event, as well as Duke Energy for another grant for, to increase our fireworks display. We increased our fireworks display by twenty percent, and it was a really nice event. So I wanted to thank both of those entities, as well as the HPDA, for helping us coordinate that event. There's also a volunteer group in the city this week, and I wanted to thank the Deep Impact Volunteer Group for their volunteer efforts this week. They're gonna be out at the city lake. They're out there today, and they will be out there tomorrow cleaning up, and they will assist Parks and Rec Thursday and Friday later on this week. So I wanted to thank them for graciously assisting in community projects and even going as far as graciously offering to feed city employees on Thursday. We accepted bids for the demolition of the old A&amp;P building through today, and we will open those tomorrow, and we hope to get that building removed as soon as possible, although it may take a contractor maybe four to six weeks to complete, but that project is up and running. I also wanted to thank the Cole Foundation and the Richmond Community Foundation for matching grants to make improvements to both Memorial Ballpark as well as...
WD James.
WD James. Thank you. I lost my place. Youth soccer registration is open through July 22nd, and late registration is the 25th through the 29th, so please come down to city hall and sign your kids up. That's all I have to report. Thank y'all.
And Parks and Recreation has done an outstanding job keeping the grass mowed on the Parks and Recreation area. I don't know how in the world they've kept up, but they have just been working hard at it. So it's good that we were able to get the part-time employees to help with that this year. They've just done a terrific job. to help with that this year, they've just done a terrific job.
No complaints at all.
If I got anything for the manager? We have Attorney Mr. Horneak sitting, sitting in tonight, do you have anything for us? We're glad to have you with us. Okay. At this time, we'll move into comments, council, and we'll start, uh, Mr. Lindsey?
Uh, the fireworks were some of the best ever, moving on, they, they were, they were the best. I want to thank Deb Holmes from the, about the lone representative of HBDA down there on July fourth, she was doing the, uh, watermelon eating contest and a couple other things, but she gets the, the big adder boy from them. On a personal note, Chief White, I'd like to thank Franklin McKay and Billy Gibson, they came and got my father-in-law and took care of him when he had a heart attack the other day, and just from, from our family, uh, thank you, we had two of them in different hospitals this week, so we've, we've been, been a miss. I would like to see in reference to Mr. Lamont's talk, I've been, went to Maurice today, I did go by the tournament, I just couldn't stay for very long, we were closing our business that week, but I would like to see about moving the money that he made off of the gate into his, into his budget, since he could've said, he, he could've not raised his hand to have this tournament. They, they had thirty-six hundred, almost thirty-seven hundred dollars, that was total for concession and gate, but the gate was just twenty-four.
How much was that?
Thirty, thirty-six ninety-six was the total I was given for concession and gate, and the gate was twenty-four oh five, and if, if we could put the twenty-four hundred into his budget, since he and his volunteer Jennifer was out there, and, and, because he could've, he could've let it pass, he could've just said, not raised his hand to do it, and, and...
Is that something, um, we would need to do a, um...
Budget amendment?
Yes, Mayor and council, at, um, the next quarterly budget amendments, i- as long as it's okay with y'all, we can take those totals, add them up, and amend the revenue side as well as the expenditure side to complete a, a much-needed project, if you would like to do that, it's no problem.
If, if we did just the gate, then it, it wouldn't be a complicated thing of the, what was bought for the concession stand, and, and the concession stand off of that figure, I'm sure made enough money to pay for the umpires and all the other expenses that the tournament...
That's, that's something we need to wait on, or we already know the twenty-four oh five was for the gate and all, is that something we could go ahead and do?
That's what we know, I mean, that came today from, from City Hall. Jennifer shaking her head.
We'll just go into regular bucket amendment.
So you're gonna put it in with the rest of them?
Mm-hmm.
I got you, I got you.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get all that down Jill? Did just manager, did y'all get all that down?
We know those amounts.
Okay.
I, I think I, I wrote down thirty-six ninety-six for concessions and twenty-four oh five for gate. For concessions, it would be, might be, it might be difficult to ac, very precisely
Well, that's why I said just, just the gate.
So you don't have to worry about trying to figure it out.
That's fine.
Twenty-four oh five.
He was ecstatic, just the gate, so he was happy to, if we could do that, thank you, that's all.
One, one item, um, I've had a couple people ask me about the little area between one seventy-seven and Batley Dairy Road, it, it was landscaped at one time and had a bunch of, uh, flowers and stuff, I don't know when I was in there, crape myrtles and maybe some knockout roses, but anyway, they seem to think it needs some attention. Uh, maybe you could get Pat to look at it and see if there, if there's anything they could do to beautify it, I think somebody mentioned needed, needed new bark or something in there, I don't know.
New bark.
Just look at it and see what you think.
Yes, sir, I, I know...
Manager and I looked at it week four last.
This is right at the intersection of Batley Dairy and Highway one seventy-seven, um, the Hamlet Tree Board or Tree Committee donated the trees, and they were planted, the labor was provided by city staff, and the DOT, um, years ago approved the city's ability to maintain that triangular, uh, area. I do know that, um, our staff has been out there cutting as well as spraying, Pat's been out there spraying, what it does probably need is a large amount of mulch, and we may need to try to find the funds to, to put the amount that we would need out there, so...
Can we, um, have that amount needed by the next, uh, budget amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Cause I have seen Pat out there on two different occasions over the past, I guess, month and a half.
We need two or three Pats.
Yeah, I know.
There's Maskey?
Nothing.
Nothing at all, okay. Jonathan?
Um, the only thing I have is, is the, uh, you mentioned the playground equipment at the park, that looks extremely nice, it's really good, they've opened it up now, so you can kind of come from the field to, to, uh, to play, and all, kids don't have to come around, leave parents, and come outside of the gate and all that, so, all that area looks really good. Uh, the fireworks, we, we're gonna try to go to that, but we knew it was gonna be a ten-hour drive for our vacation to Florida, and we just couldn't see leaving on July fifth to drive ten hours to come back July eighth, driving another ten hours, so unfortunately we didn't get to make that, but I, I did keep up on everything with Facebook, cause everybody puts every, you know, all that on there, so I got to see them going off. The, uh, All-Stars tournaments that went on, uh, again, I've done a lot of traveling for work, so I haven't been able to go, but one of the coaches down there, he came to me before this went on, he talked to me while it was going on, and he talked to me after the fact, and he kept me up to date on everything, and said that it turned out to be extremely outstanding, no coaches' issues, no parent issues, um, so he was, uh, he was very ecstatic about that, he was concerned to begin with, cause, you know, as we know, our baseball fields are not in the most, best tip-top of shape, but he said they managed to turn it around, and it looked amazing, so, um...
And they're getting there, cause they didn't even know that there were sprinkler systems on the, on the field.
Yeah, yeah, so it...
They're working on those.
It just turned out to be absolutely amazing, um, so I, nothing but positives from, I, I, I have not had one negative, and I can't tell you when, so that speaks highly of, it goes from, from staff all the way down to our department heads, all the way down to the employees, part-time, everything, so that's, that's really good, it's been a long time since there have been zero negatives. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we want to say congratulations to Little's Automotive here on, uh, Hamlet Avenue, uh, relatively new business, who is, has been selected as the HBDA business for the month of July, so, uh, go by and see them and see what they have to offer up there, and, uh, just tell them we're glad to have them in the city of Hamlet. Nikki Sewell is not here, the director of the, uh, Senior Center, but over the past two weeks, she has accomplished what was not expected to happen for three years, and she accomplished it in one year, and that was to get us recertified down there as a center of excellence. And it means, I, and I do say this, it means a tremendous amount of money, and the fact that she did this in a year, instead of three years, this is just, this is remarkable, even the inspectors that came in and judged it, said it was, so, uh, we have got a center of excellence, we do wonderful things down there, we provide a great service, and, uh, go visit, they like to have you come in and visit, go in and see what's going on down there, and she's got a newsletter that goes out every month and tells what's going on down there in the month, so you might get a copy of that and take a look at it. We got, uh, the other day, we got a letter from one of the commissioners up in, uh, the ball commissioners up in Pine Bluff, and it was an excellent letter, he said he could not express enough his appreciation for the, what we did for the tournament, he said that the tournament was outstanding, and he appreciated what the people in the city of Hamlet did to make that come off, and I thought that was very nice, other than sending us that letter. The, uh, again, like I say, the grass mowing, I don't know how in the world everybody's keeping up with it, but, uh, the grass mowing's looking real good, that, uh, that hay grass comes back up just as fast as you mow it, and, uh, so that's, uh, that's about all I've got tonight, again, I want to thank the, uh, employees of the city of Hamlet and the volunteers that put on the, uh, put on the, uh, tournament down there, and for what the work that city employees do out here on the streets every day, so thank you so much for that. At this time, council, uh, we need a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege and discussion of acquisition of real property.
So move.
And that shouldn't take us too long, okay? Got a motion? Got a second? On favor say aye.
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 We're gonna go into next room, so anybody wants to sit and wait just a few minutes is welcome to do so. Okay, I need a motion to go into open session.
So move.
Got a motion and a second? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, second? Okay, uh, at this time, we're back in open session, the council did not make any decisions or any votes, uh, at the closed session, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got a mo, got a motion and a second? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at this time.